The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Troop. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Triplet. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderman Troop. Alderwoman Triplet. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. Twenty-two, present.
Quarren being present, I'll ask everyone in the chambers and the galleries who's able to rise to please stand for prayer. As we go over the prayer this morning and we move throughout our week, I'll ask everyone to keep in their prayers. Joe Vollmer, his recovery is coming along very well, but keep him in your hearts and prayers this week. Given all honor to God. Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Dispense with line items three of introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, I'd like to have as my honored guest Celeste Reader from the Realtors, Chris Maliter, and Ale from the firefighters. I'd like to welcome the retired firefighters and the firefighters up in the gallery.
Alderwoman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would like to have as my special guest today David Holmes, the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, and Anthony Lancia with the AGC. Thank you.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the thirteenth, you're recognized on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve the minutes of the March ninth and sixteenth meetings.
Moved by Alderman from the thirteenth, I entertain the second motion. Second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
With dispense with line item seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informer calendars? Alderman from the twenty-second, you're recognized.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move for third reading and final passage of Board Bill two-eighty.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, second by Alderman from the twentieth, Alderman from the twenty-second, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. Board Bill two-eighty will require that the Treasury's office publish annually all depositories of city funds. Why is this important? This creates transparency for the city constituency so that they will know where all the city funds are invested. Why is that important? Because if there are banks or financial institutions that are supporting predatory lending or not favorable toward residents of the city of St. Louis, those funds should not be published, put on record with those particular financial institutions, and the public needs to know that.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill number two-eighty? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize the close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded that with third reading and final pass, Board Bill number two-eighty. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Troop. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Triplet. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderman Troop. Alderman Vollmer. Alderwoman Davis. Twenty-six, aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in motion of Alderman from the twenty-second and third reading and final pass, Board Bill number two-eighty. We'll dispense with line items ten through fifteen. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill two-seventy, committee substitute sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen. Schmidt, Conway, Ortman, Howard, Florida, Behringer, Cohn, and Cruzen. An artist pertaining to the fireman's retirement system discontinuing the accrual of benefits under the fireman's retirement system and repealing in its entirety Chapter four point one eighth of the Revised Code nineteen ninety-four edition.
Alderman from the twentieth, you're recognized on the perfection of Board Bill number two-seventy, committee substitute.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for perfection of Board Bill two-seventy.
Moved by Alderman from the twentieth, second by Alderman from the fifteenth. Alderman, please proceed.
Mr. President, members of the Board, justifiably proud is the firefighter's motto. Justifiably proud, they should be, and so are we. They are our fire department, they are our neighbors, friends, and our constituents. We all know about what first responders, what they do for our communities. That was brought to many people's consciousness in the horrific cowardly actions of terrorists on September eleventh, two thousand and one in New York. But it was brought home to me with the deaths of Derek Martin and Captain Robert Morrison on May third, two thousand and two, and again with Leonard Riggins, who was killed trying to be a good Samaritan in November of two thousand and eight. In a moment of crisis, we cannot possibly pay them enough or do enough for them and their families. This is about making their pension plan sustainable so that it will be there when they retire. And we are talking about making it affordable for taxpayers. There's an entire city to operate, and there are tough choices that we need to make. I am asking today that we perfect Board Bill two-seventy because there's a fiscal crisis in our firefighter's retirement system and because we have a math problem. Taxpayers' costs have risen from six point four million in two thousand and one to twenty-nine million in the coming fiscal year. Our constituents are the ones that are footing the bill and getting reductions in city services in return. They are paying more, getting less. Since two thousand and one, the firefighter retirement system has actuarial losses of a quarter of a billion, with a B, quarter of a billion dollars. Despite those losses, retirees voted themselves and ad hoc cost of living increased this year over and above what they are normally entitled to. When more than three-quarters of the payroll of the firefighter actives is what we contribute to their pension, we are moving toward two fire departments and only getting the current benefit of one. When projected pension cost estimates for each active participant of the fire department is forty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars per year, the police cost is one-half of that, a little over half of that, at twenty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. And other employees within our city are getting one-sixth of that at seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars. There is a math problem. When nearly one-half of our fire department employees are going out on disability, making seventy-five percent of a salary level they may never have earned while working, can work another job and get paid there too, keep all of their workers' compensation settlement with no offset to disability payments, and get three and five percent cost of living raises each year, there's a math problem. One-third of the overall fire department budget is now consumed by pension costs. The additional five million dollar costs this year could be used for eighty firefighters, for the demolition of more of the buildings that are falling down in some of our wards, more weed cutting at vacant lots in the city, restoration of funding to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Aldermanic Capital Improvement Funds, Proposition S Crime Reduction Monies, rolling stock and capital improvements, all of which have been put off. As our Director of Operations put it, these unsustainable pension costs have made taxpayers a virtual ATM. To meet these escalating pension costs, we have raised the sales tax, we charge for trash, we have borrowed hundreds of millions of dollars, we have eliminated sixty civilian jobs, we have furloughed employees, we have diverted money from parks and low-income housing, from crime prevention and neighborhood improvements, we have put off needed repairs and renovations and reduced the reserve account to a dangerously low level of eight million dollars. We have been talking about this problem for years. There was a task force established about six years ago. It is clear something comprehensively must be done, so let's do it now, right? Well, no, we're told that we can't do it now. We have to wait because the current pension system was created in the nineteen forties, renewed in nineteen fifty-nine, and the city voluntarily opted into that plan. So in order to change it, we have to have permission of the state and enabling legislation from the state, and this is where we get into the local control over changes to the pension fund, not local control of the fund itself. Board Bill two-seventy is about local control of changes to the plan. We've heard a lot about local control in the police department context. We know our residents want those decisions about the police department to be made locally, not by the governor or his appointees. All of us down here were elected to represent the city in our wards, and as bright and well-meaning as legislators from Joplin, Moberly, or Branson may be, it's not their fire department, it's our fire department, it's not their streets department or parks department. Our voters elect the mayor, the comptroller, the president of the Board of Aldermen, and us to work on these matters. They don't elect the whole state legislature. There is no relationship, no accountability, and certainly no transparency between our voters and the entire state legislature. Every time we have to go to Jefferson City to get legislation to operate our own business, that's an insult to this Board of Aldermen who was elected to legislate and an insult to those who elected us to represent them, to do this. Some firefighters suggest that this is a checks and balances system. Some firefighters say they believe that the evidence in our history to the contrary, that they won't get a fair shot and a decent pension benefits if we have local control. On the other hand, there are people who have told me that the state legislature has been a break on the Board of Aldermen, a break from us giving away the store to firefighters. It is certainly not the checks and balances we learned about in school. Firefighters seem to like this arrangement because it allows for special interests, theirs, and that is their right, to go to Jefferson City and lobby for the legislation they want. Our taxpayers do not have the wherewithal to travel to Jefferson City all the time to get their voices heard. They can come to City Hall. They also can go to Jefferson City to attend a hearing maybe, but they can't develop the relationships the various firefighter groups across the state can create, those personal relationships. In this so-called system of checks and balances, the state legislators don't have to balance our budget, but we do. We are the ones who have to explain why our constituents are paying more and getting less. And how many bites of the apple are firefighters entitled to that our other constituents are not, going through the House of Representatives in Jeff City, the Senate, reconciliation, and the governor before it comes to our system and city government of E and A, the Board of Aldermen, the mayor, and the courts? So what's the big deal? The Board of Aldermen still has the chance to pass or not pass whatever legislation comes to us from the state. That's correct, sure, but the options and flexibility are limited, and we cannot amend whatever comes to us. It's an all-or-nothing proposition. Even now, there is House Bill eighteen fifty-seven, and it's not clear that it saves us the five million dollars we need this year because the firefighters do not want to impact active firefighters. It relies on entry age normal of four million dollars in cost shifting, but in the interest of not changing things and shifting the costs that rightfully belong to firefighters, shifting them to the taxpayers and our other employees, are we going to pretend that the problem is solved? Let me also suggest to you that this is a violation of our voters' rights. You know, there was a time in this country when not everyone eighteen years or over had the right to vote. And when people were given the right to vote, some places tried to make it as hard as possible to exercise that right. There were poll taxes and poll tests. We have the Voting Rights Act and the concept of one person, one vote. We redistrict every ten years to try to maintain that, and that is being diluted here when all the legislators throughout the state and the governor have as much or more to say about our firefighter pension than our taxpayers, the ones who are paying the bills, more than they have or the impact that we have as the legislators here in the city. I suggest to you that there is more than one way to take away your right to vote. It can be before you vote, or it can be afterward, as it is here. We have all been elected, but we are mere shells, mere puppets, if we have to wait for the state to tell us what will be in our legislation and in our contract with our fire department. Our voters' rights are taken away when all the votes of the entire state elect the folks who decide what we can do with our police department or with our firefighter pension. Let me ask you this: If we could regain control of our police department by passing legislation here locally, wouldn't we do it? Would we choose to keep going to the state legislature with no positive result? Would we choose to do a statewide initiative petition? The Thompson Coburn attorney, Paul Griesimer, explained why we have the right and the power to do this today. In his letter of March second, two thousand and twelve, he indicated that we entered the pension system voluntarily. We didn't have to. And when the city suggested in court that there were unfunded mandates of the pension system under the Hancock Amendment, the courts have told us we are voluntarily in it. Ordinance four-nine-six-two-three, which created the current system, says, quote, "The city of St. Louis reserves the right to amend or repeal this ordinance at any time hereafter." Page six of the March second letter explains why we have the right to establish our own plan as a charter city. Now that unions have more rights to meet and confer in the public system, isn't it only right that they meet and confer with us rather than with those in Jefferson City? Without local control, there will never be any reason for Local Seventy-three to meet and confer with us. The contract is fashioned in Jeff City and brought to us. Then Local Seventy-three lobbies us to pass what is preordained. We are able to act like little more than a state protectorate when we are in fact a charter city representing all the voters of our city. Our attorneys have shown us the legal means to get local control of the fire department pension in order to change costs to our taxpayers going forward and not changing any of the benefits already earned by firefighters, inability to get short-term, medium-term, and long-term savings. Why would we choose to maintain the status quo at the expense of our constituents and our taxpayers and city employees when we are offered this option to opt out of the state plan in order to transfer over to a local plan? I hope you agree. Let's go on record as being fiscally responsible to our taxpayers while still doing right by our firefighters. I urge your vote to perfect Board Bill two-seventy-seven in our request a roll call.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Board Bill two-seventy.
You mean Board Bill two-seventy, committee substitute? Okay. Any further discussion? Alderman from the twentieth.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I agree with almost everything the Alderman from the twenty-fourth said. Thank you. I agree with almost everything the Alderman from the twentieth ward said. We're in a terrible bind fiscally, I think, with the current system. And I think we're also in a terrible bind legally in figuring out what to do to correct the system. But where I might disagree is our ability to locally change, with our own local ordinance, to take a state-authorized system and turn that into a local system. I've read the two thousand and seven Supreme Court ruling regarding pension funding, which is where part of that justification, as described to us, came from. I don't see that justification in there. I don't see the word voluntary in that decision. What I do see is this sentence, where there is no mandate that the city take on a new responsibility, but only a continued responsibility for it to fund an existing activity according to a previously existing formula. There is no Hancock violation. So this two thousand and seven ruling, it's really talking about our obligation to fund the system and our obligation, you know, that we have already enacted, as well as our obligation. It's, the original case was challenged on, you know, whether we could trust, you know, the actuaries and whatnot, and were pretty decisively shut down in this two thousand and seven case. So where else do we get that authority? Well, the other piece that was offered was this, well, we reserve the right to change or amend the system at any time, which is in the local ordinance. That same language is not in the state ordinance or the state statute, and when you look at the local ordinance, it also directly points to the state statute and says, this ordinance is authorized under, you know, the state statute passed, you know, nineteen fifty-nine. So it's pointing at saying this gives us the authority at the state level to do this. So what can we do? We're in this terrible bind. What can we do now locally to solve the problem? I think right now with that state action, we could enact a new second-tier system, locally governed, for new hires. The state statute doesn't say that you have to continue this system in perpetuity and that every new employee ever hired has to be in the system. Municipalities have the right to authorize their own pension systems. So we can get a second tier, and we can determine the benefits for that second tier on our own, and we could do it quickly, as far as I can tell. We could have it done six weeks from now if we wanted to. The second, and there'd be no impairment of contract because we wouldn't be changing the rules for anybody already in the system. The second thing I think we could do is I think we could probably locally change the disability benefit structure. Missouri courts are looking at pensions themselves as implied contracts, according, you know, to the rulings I've read. But it's not clear that the disability portion is an implied contract. I don't know if you take a job and you say, well, I think I'm going to get disabled, so this disability portion is part of my ultimate compensation. That's really a safety net for those that get disabled. So there's two things we could do that would, you know, bend the curve of the cost increases. I think we could do them locally, second tier. I think we could probably do a local second-tier system, possibly without even having to go through a lawsuit. I think we could enact a local disability system, which we would probably be challenged in court, but I think we would prevail on that because I don't think anybody has a contractual right to a disability system that they're not in yet. And third of all, I think we could probably get a local system, a complete local system, but not unless the state changes the rules there. The state's gonna have to act. Is that a situation I want to be in? It's not. I don't think, you know, I think we're in a bad situation, but you don't want to pursue a lawsuit. I'm not afraid of a lawsuit, but you want to go into a lawsuit with the idea that you are going to win. And, you know, conveniently, we have two sets of attorneys, and the attorneys paid by one side say the things that that side wants to hear, and the attorneys paid by the other side say the things that that side wants to hear. So we had to read this stuff and make our own determinations. You know, attorneys are always wrong fifty percent of the time. One side loses all the time. So the fact that you have an opinion that says, you know, this is our opinion, we think we're gonna prevail, is, I think, irrelevant until you go and look at, you know, what that opinion is based on. We got two and a half months until the budget is due. There is still time locally, I think, to make some of these changes and get the savings in the next budget year. We don't have to sit on our hands and wait for the state to act on all of this stuff. So, you know, that's what I hope we do. I also think, you know, going forward, talking to my future colleagues ten or twenty years from now, we've really piecemealed this thing into a mess. We took what was an adequate benefit, and we added to it, and added to it, and added to it, and added to it. I'm sure every single time, the justification was, this is just a little bit extra, this is a little bit extra, this is a little more. But after thirty years of doing that, we have a system we can't pay for anymore. So, you know, brick by brick, we've built this thing that's collapsing back on us, so I'll caution people in the future that, you know, a little bit over and over adds up to a lot. So with that, I hope we hold off on two-seventy, but I hope we come right back and introduce something that'll get us some savings immediately. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the eighth.
Morning, Mr. President, members of the Board. I wasn't gonna say anything, but as an attorney, one thing I can tell you is, I know I don't think this is the answer. I know the answer. If you went to law school, or you went to the same law school with Mr. Shepherd or whatever, you think about things, you think you're right, you think you're right, you think you're right. You're either right or you're wrong. You talk about the two thousand and seven case, I was intimately familiar with the two thousand and seven case, and for those of you who weren't here in two thousand and seven, you know, when the firefighters sued us, our position at that time was, under Hancock, we didn't have to fund it, we were underfunded, and it's a historical pattern with the firefighters. You get underfunded for a few years, they force us upward to fund it one hundred percent, which we were pretty comfortable at that point in time we were gonna lose. Their mantra to us was, well, lose it, you're gonna have to figure out where to come up with the money, sell for a spark. That was the mantra at that time. Now, I was here for twenty years, the vast majority of these incremental increases I spoke up against, usually on perfection only because I was beating a dead horse. And even one time, my greatest political ally, Mayor Shamo, called me, and he said, "Steve, will you help uphold my veto on one of these issues?" And given the fact that he beat my father, I don't know that we were the greatest allies during that period of time. And I said, "Absolutely correct," because the issue at that time was, the firefighters came to us, and they said, "Well, we're overfunded, it's our money." My point is, when we were overfunded, I said, "Okay, if that's your money, if we're ever underfunded, will you take a cut?" You know, the obvious answer was, "No." Many of these items came to us over this period of time, and I know I have a couple of colleagues down here who've been here longer than me, and they understood what happened. The actuaries from the firefighters came in and said, "Well, it's not gonna cost that much." The personnel department came in, "It's not gonna cost that much." We don't have necessarily an independent voice, an independent financial voice, that actually analyzed, that all you had was a vote that was twenty-six to two, and I was part of the two against it. it. I'd seen in business, businesses in the seventies and the eighties, eliminated these defined benefit plans, never adding more and more future costs. And what we talk about in Alderman Schmidt from the twentieth ward, we rarely agree on many of these issues, but on this one, he is dead right, and I appreciate the leadership that he's shown here. And, you know, I've had the, the ability to, and the great honor to, to do the Ways and Means Committee. And I think the point that really should have been made by Alderman Schmidt, I can't give him all of the credit, is we have to have a sustainable city. We have to have a sustainable situation of revenue and moderately growing expenses. Our situation is not sustainable. It's not sustainable for the firefighters, the building inspectors, the police officers, the refuse workers. We do not have a sustainable situation. It cannot, will not. I've met with the firefighters, I don't have a dog in this fight, you know, I'm on the end here of my career, I don't plan to be here much longer. I don't have a dog, but everybody has to figure it out. And where I'll give credit is to the mayor, because I can't believe that we've actually had a mayor in my lifetime actually put their neck on the line, give up all of the support that the firefighters would have given them if he would have just buried this under the sand and put it off to the next mayor. I will give him credit. And so Alderman, when you get to a crossroad that's taken twenty years to get here, and you saw the delaying tactics by the president and other members to even get this bill this far today, what makes you think that you're gonna fresh start it and have it done in six weeks? It just doesn't happen. The firefighters are a very political and strong union here, both in the city of St. Louis and in Jefferson City. And what you have to look at, in Jeff City, they don't go down until that first weekend in May. And for those of you who aren't familiar what happens in Jeff City, they can take these bills and they can tell you to do that, they're gonna lay it on another bill at the last minute, as long as it's a similar topic, and get it through. And that's what's gonna probably happen, I'm sure that that's what they're working for, that our refusal to act, our inability to act, will hamper us going forward. That's why today is the important day to act, that when you walk down that long road and you get to that fork in the road, you have to decide, shall I go forward and make this a sustainable, growing, good property value city going forward, or do I turn around and walk back to where I came from? That is your decision today, each of you in this room, because I can assure you, we won't be at this fork in the road in six weeks. Thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I've listened to everybody this morning, and, and I guess everybody has valid points, you know, I, I've just been here a year now. You know, just a few points that I want to make. I think firefighters understand that cuts need to be made, and I'm hoping that they're willing to make these cuts. And, and I think, I think it can be done, but I, I know I read the state statute where it says, you know, you cannot take any benefits away from any existing, you know, or current firefighters as it stands. It's a shame that we have to go through the city and, and the state to pass a bill. But I guess my question is, and I can't answer for my forefathers, why did they ever opt to be in from the beginning with them? You know, you know, we talk about shortage on money and pensions, you know, in the eighties, when we did have money, I know there's a few times they didn't pay the pension, because they said they were short, maybe they was, and everything else. But also, I know there's been a lot of bills passed on here over the past twenty years that, that everybody, or ninety-nine percent was in favor of firefighters. So, you know, you gotta think when you're passing bills also, what can happen in the future and maybe have a safety net for it. So, you know, and I think if you, well, I, I can say this, for the citizens of my ward, the biggest majority, they love firefighters and policemen, it's, it's just the way it is. You know, unfortunately, you know, nine eleven, everything else, has drugged this whole country down. It, it's caused the stock markets to crash, and we're trying to rebound, which it'll probably take a few more years if we do. But, you know, you talk about cost savings, and, you know, here we just give a four million dollar a year break to AT&amp;T building on taxes, because it's not full. My house isn't full when I'm not home, and I don't get a break on it, and I don't, I don't mean to be candid, but, you know, your taxes are assessed to what they are. So, you know, we got a big problem here, and I think, you know, if we can get together with a bill with new hirees, with the second tier and change benefits then, I, I definitely agree that disability's been, was, has been taken advantage of for years. But, you know, and, and we're not in the best of shape economy-wise. So, you know, on that token, you just say, you know what, we got less firefighters now, and people may say that, you know, the quality of work's not any better, but when my house is on fire, I want a fireman there, and I can't go in a house, I, I'm not built to be a fireman, and, you know, they may not have a call for one day, but when they get that call, you know, their life's on the line when a house is on fire and you're trying to rescue people. So, you know, I just think, maybe we're rushing this bill, you know, the bill in Jeff City, we don't know where that's gonna go, and it may not go nowhere. But, you know, I agree with Alderman Ogilvy, you know, maybe, you know, we can come back with another bill, you know, and possibly may not want to do that. I guess we'll find out today on the vote. So I guess my point I'm making is, you know, we've been kicking the can down the road for ten years, according to everybody. But gosh darn it, kicking another block for me, I've only been here a year, and, and, you know, maybe we can get something worked out, you know. Each side of the lawyers are confident, and lawyers are always confident, and someone's gonna win and someone's gonna lose. I think if this bill passes today, we're gonna wind up having a lawsuit filed against us, and everybody knows that, and we'll have to see where that goes. So, you know, I, I just, I just felt like I had to say that, you know, you know, firemen do, and they realize they do have a good pension system, and they realize that they have to start making cuts too. And I think they're willing to do that, but I, I think, you know, you just have to sit down and work things out to their worked out and, and not walk away from a table. If you have to sit there for a week to work it out, because, you know, maybe the ultimate is if you can't work it out, then you have to do what you gotta do, and I understand that also. So I'm hoping that everybody just thinks about this a little bit and, you know, decide what they think is right. I'm certainly not gonna get mad at anyone that votes their own opinion, because everybody has their own opinion. And, you know, when you say it, it is costing, it costs the taxpayers for everything, but that will show you, when we had to vote for, you know, when it was on the ballot, allowing the police to move out of the city, that got beat. You know, people love their public safety employees, and we also need to think about the city employees. It's been years since they had raises. You know, we was asked to support a bond or a bill about four years ago, a half cent sales tax, I believe. And if this half cent sales tax passed, it would generate enough money to start paying back to the pensions, give city employees a raise, and there wouldn't be no layoffs or furloughs. Well, I'm here to tell you, I've been furloughed ever since when I worked for the city. So, you know, I guess you can never generate enough money because things go up. And, you know, I know we borrowed twenty-seven million dollars to pay back some pension monies and things like that. And I'm just gonna end in this and, and shut my trap. I didn't think we was in that bad of a shape because we're, we're, you know, buying bonds to support Forest Park. So, bond issues, so, and maybe we are, maybe we shouldn't have passed that bill, but I, I think that bill went fairly easy through the board, so maybe we need to consider a little more on everything before we, before we pass, you know, bond issues and bills and everything else, and put some kind of safety net in it, because, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. So I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-third.
I know the Alderman from the eighth said, or, I'm sorry, from twenty-fourth said, we could put something together in six weeks, and I, I actually agree with that, and I agree with what he had said. What I do know, from what I've seen and what votes have gone on, if we pass this, it's gonna be instantly taken over to the court, there's gonna be an injunction filed against it, we'll be fighting this thing in court for a couple of years. I don't think asking simply to just wait, see what goes on in Jeff City, most of everything that was in two seventy-one is what the firefighters are fighting to get up in Jeff City. I don't, I just don't see any reason we wouldn't want to wait, because six weeks compared to lawsuits and just moving this thing down the road again, it's just not, doesn't make good sense. So I, you know, I, I'm gonna stand in opposition to the bill and, and agree a hundred percent with both my colleagues from the twenty-fourth and, I can't think of the word.
All right.
Anyway, and that's, that's where I'm at.
All right, thanks, Alderman from the twenty-third. Alderman from the twenty-seventh. Would you like to, Alderman from the, you were standing first, but Alderman from nineteenth, Alderman from the twenty-seventh passing it on to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As most of you know, I haven't been as close to this issue as I probably could have been, but what I did say in the one and only public discourse that we had as a legislative body was that I'm not on anybody's side, I'm here to make sure that business is done appropriately, I'm most especially concerned about the firefighters for the future. I've had this discussion with them for the last three years about their pension fund. It is dwindling by the day. They are losing because of all the special interest types of initiatives that are spent out of their fund with little regard for protection and recovery. I've talked to them about having more expertise and showing them how to invest in that fund, because with all the other funds in the same category, in the Midwest region with the same size funds, they have not been gaining the appropriate dollar amounts in, in that fund. I've talked to them about understanding that in, in any time that you are an employee, the employer has rights as well. And so the employer does not have to guarantee that anything is there for the rest of your life, as we have seen with all the major corporations that have died and tried to come back, listening to what Sony has to go through, Sony we thought had all the money in the world, but they are in as much trouble as anybody else, listening to what has happened in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, has filed bankruptcy, and many other small municipalities have done the same. It is time to get off the dime, it is time for all of us to question ourselves, and we need to be about business. And so whether you think this is right or wrong today, what you need to ask yourself is, does my vote make a difference in order for the betterment of the firefighters in the future, the citizenry in this town for the future, for the budget responsibilities that we have in order to provide appropriate services, and are we going to open up every door possible to make sure that that happens? Now, I've been dealing with my senses really, really bad, but I managed to read that bill that is in Jefferson City now, and I've only been here five years, and I've read a whole bunch of bills in Jefferson City that didn't go through, for whatever reason. And I don't know if I can count on them one hundred percent, but I do want to have something that is also working in order to help this cause. This is not gonna get any better. You know, the negotiations that we've been having, we've been playing games with each other, and everybody's, you know, one side wants to win, the other side wants to, you know, make sure the other side loses, and I'm not here for that. I'm never here for that, and you never hear me talk that way. What I am here for is in the best interest of all. So I'm still sitting here making my decision about my vote, and I've said that to anybody that called me, or thought enough or respected me enough to call me and ask me, I said that to you, and so I'm still listening today. But I do know that at the end of the day, if we walk out of here and we haven't done anything proactive, we are going to be questioned, with, fingers are gonna be pointed at us like they have already been, in my public meetings, I don't know about anybody else's, but I go to every block unit meeting, every neighborhood association meeting, every business association meeting. And I have firefighters that live in my ward, I have a lot, I probably, I think if I counted it right, I probably have about eighteen, but I'm sure you guys have those numbers prepared already to know who needs to get me if I do the wrong thing. But at the end of the day, I can't be afraid of that, because I've got to do what's right for you. I'm thinking about you. I don't know what's shared with you, what conversations that I've had about this whole situation, but for those of you who don't know, I have years of experience working with pension funds and financial, financial institutions, and I've done well with budgets, I've improved those budgets, and I know what I'm talking about, and I want to see you improve. I want to see us improve. I also am not afraid of a lawsuit. You're gonna get a lawsuit whether you're right or wrong, it doesn't matter. So if you let a lawsuit, you know, make you run away, that's not good responsibility as a legislator, and I'm not saying anybody's right or wrong, because who knows who's gonna sue who? You know, we keep these folks busy, that's why they keep getting new buildings, because we keep them busy. You know, I tell my young people that, you need to stop shooting up things and breaking into people's houses and stealing cars, because you're making somebody else rich so they can buy yachts, and you still poor. So some, somewhere along the line, you gotta get smart about how you think. And I'm gonna sit here and listen to whoever else has something to say, so I can make a decision about where I need to be, but at the end of the day, I still care more about making sure that we do a better job, because you know, for those of you all who sit with me on the budget committee, you know, I haven't been happy since I got here. I wanted to take your budget and tear it apart, because it made no sense to me, none. Don't, and you know, Steve, you know I was a problem. I'm a problem when it comes to it, because I don't think we're being smart, I don't think we're being good business people. But at the end of the day, I gotta go along with all that other stuff that people have reasons that they cut deals for, I don't cut deals. I do what's right. So I had to speak my mind because I'm not feeling good about this, but I want to continue to listen to what other people have to say, but I also wanted people to have some conscience about this too. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't planning on speaking today because, you know, this is really a simple piece of legislation. Now, I sat down in, in committee, I've spoken with every organization from Mr. Epstein to seventy-three, to FIRE, to lobbyists from the administration and from your office, and it's, it's basically, this bill today, folks, when we let it out of committee, it does nothing. Two seventy does nothing but gives the city of St. Louis a position to create other legislation. If House Bill eighteen fifty-seven doesn't pass out, goes to the Senate, because right now you got eleven and oh votes in Jefferson City, but right now, folks, it's passed out of committee, but it doesn't have a slot. In Jefferson City, you need a slot for bills. It passes out, but if it doesn't have a slot, it goes nowhere. So if we sit here twiddling our thumbs, doing nothing, we look totally incompetent. And I took up until the last day for that bill to come out of my committee, because I wanted to hear everything, and I didn't want any deals cut, I didn't want anybody circumventing the meetings that we had going on early on with the administration and FIRE and seventy-three and Mr. Epstein and everybody else, and members of the Board of Aldermen. It was important that when we pass this out, this has created en, enabling legislation, basically saying, if we pass this bill out today, it is absolutely, and it will not do anything until we have created another piece of legislation. And I'm gonna tell you guys, to be honest with you, if it comes back into my committee, I'm not gonna do anything until Jefferson City, just to let you know, just to put me on record, until May seventeen. May seventeen is the day Jefferson City shut down. Now, if there's nothing going on in Jefferson City by May seventeen, and we don't pass this out, we look foolish, absolutely foolish, because I have streets to pave, I have sidewalks to repair, I have trees to cut down, I have new dumpsters to buy, I have lighting to do, I have parks to do, and without funding until that half cent, three cent sales tax, we get nothing. I don't want to go back to nineteen years ago, when I didn't have no funds, I was constantly going to Washington DC trying to get funding, Jefferson City trying to get funding. Now, don't get me wrong, we're not, we don't have a lot of money here, but I don't want to put money into one pot, because then I have employees pension, I have police pension, and right now, folks, this won't- And right now, folks, this won't do anything. The firefighters, you guys will stay where you're at, right now. You'll stay where you're at. This does nothing. This just passes us out and positions us in case there's nothing going on in Jefferson City. And right now, I don't put my money on Jefferson City. I really don't. I've been talking with these folks every week. Every week I get something different. Every week, there's something different has changed. I've been in touch with the Senate, the chairman of that committee, the House. I don't put, I wouldn't gamble the city of St. Louis on Jefferson City right now. Right now, at this date. I think there's something else going on in Jefferson City. I'm not up there. So I can't really give you any advice than what I'm getting from phone calls and short meetings. But I did meet with everybody. I don't have a dog in this fight. It's basically trying to do the right thing for the public. That's all we're all here trying to do, the right thing for the public. And I was criticized taking this bill so long, up until the last day. Criticized by everybody. My own colleagues criticized me, because I took it to the last day. I could have done, I could have been ignorant. I could have done some mean things. I did not, because it's not about you, it's not about me. It's about the taxpayers. So I took it to the last day, and we got it out, and I got to thank two colleagues who came up with it to add on and tweak and amend this legislation that says enabling legislation on 270. So keep that in mind when you vote. I mean, you really, you, we, we've got to stop being so passive down here. We've got to be a more progressive city, you know? If you guys worrying about somebody voting you out, then you don't need to be down there anyway. That means you're not doing the right thing in your wars anyway. Bottom line. Work with your constituents, and you're as strong as your constituents leave you in, or stronger, or even stronger. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman, Alderman from 13th.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. I ask the sponsor to yield.
Alderman from 23th, will you yield for questioning to Alderman from 13th?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. The, um, does this bill affect the firefighters' benefit in any way?
It does not.
Does it, does it, um, just one more question, point of clarification, does it affect the future benefit fund in any way?
This bill itself does not.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from 21st.
Yeah, will the sponsor please yield?
Alderman from 20th, will you yield for questioning to Alderman from 21st?
Yes.
Alderman from 21st, please proceed.
Um, Mr. Sponsor, does this bill in any way save one dime in the next fiscal year?
No.
No. Uh, and in fact, the bill does, as the chairman said, the bill actually does nothing, except maybe cost us money in the form of triggering a lawsuit.
Absolutely not correct. What it does is what the Alderman from the 27th does, is it puts us in a position to take responsibility for our pension plan and allow us to opt out. We can only opt out, however, because the Aldermen from the 18th and the 13th, along with me, came up with the legislation that would create this as enabling legislation. So I, it does not do nothing. What it does is if we take action on it, it puts us in a position to do something.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, so I have just a few comments. So I disagree a little bit with the sponsor's interpretation of what this bill does. Uh, as the chairman said, the bill does nothing to help us in our fiscal year this year. Uh, it sets up something that we could come back with some future legislation to add on to this, that might present some, some savings down the road. But if anybody is thinking that by voting for this today, they are helping our financial picture for this year, it's not true. It's just not true. Uh, and in fact, um, though the sponsor wouldn't agree, what passing this bill does do is trigger a lawsuit. FRS is al, the Board of FRS is already authorized, um, using their funds to sue the city should this pass. So if we pass it, they're going to sue, and we will spend money on both sides, as we always do, because taxpayers pay both sides of these legal cases. So that's the only financial impact it is going to have, which is a net, a negative financial impact. The sponsor also talked about accepting responsibility, and I think that is something that this board needs to do. Too many people who have been supporting this bill have been coming down here, uh, saying that somehow the people in Jefferson City are responsible for our financial situation today with the pensions. Uh, somehow, uh, we've been forced to agree to some, some promises that we can't afford. That is not the case. No one in Jefferson City forced us to make a promise or a commitment that we are obliged to do now. Everything that we have promised our firefighters, our retirees, every city employee who's affected by this is something that passed this Board of Aldermen and was signed into effect by a, by a mayor. Even this current mayor, when he was in this board, in this body, supported these changes that increased our liabilities. So we need to accept some responsibility for what we've done as a board, even those of us who were not actually here. We need to accept responsibility, and no one has forced us into this situation. Uh, we've made some commitments to our employees. These specific employees, firefighters, have a difficult job. They, in fact, make sacrifices that many other employees wouldn't even have to dream about. We all have stressful jobs, uh, but at the end of my term as Alderman, I might have some high blood pressure, but, you know, I'll, I'll still have all my limbs. Um, a good friend of my family is a firefighter. He's, uh, lived a couple of blocks down from me for all my life. He was a friend of my, my uncle's. His name is Danny. He's been a firefighter just short of 20 years. Uh, Danny's always been a fitness conscious, healthy guy. Uh, and just recently, when I last saw Danny, as he came to walk up our steps, he was, he was wheezing. So I asked Danny, what's, what's, you know, what's going on? What's, what's, what you feeling? Uh, he said he recently came from his doctor's appointment, and he has developed asthma. Uh, Danny's always been super fitness conscious. I mean, a healthy man from, picture of health from as long as I've known him. He developed this illness, which will follow him for the rest of his life now, in the service of this city. So we've made a commitment to these folks who take on a dangerous job, and any attempt to go back on any of those commitments, I can't support. Um, we've made promises. Have we made promises that are expensive? Yes. Um, but just like if you make a financial commitment or a financial obligation in your household, just because you find yourself a little over, under, with your head underwater here, doesn't mean you can just do away with the, do away with the obligation. So we have a responsibility. I think we need to, uh, live up to that responsibility, and I think people in this room need to understand that this specific thing, this specific piece of legislation that we're voting on today, doesn't save us one dime and in fact only costs the taxpayer the money as it's written today.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from 20th, you, Alderman from 20th, you recognize the close.
Mr. President, members of the board, thank you very much. Um, I know, personally know that this is difficult. I can tell you the way that I've approached it, which has not been very good in the past, it is good now. And when Alderman Gargali was down here, he and I came in at the same time, and we have the selection of committees based on our seniority as the, as the president, and we all know down here. I, I, in the last few years, the last six years, um, I have chosen not to engage in that card pull, because I didn't want to take the Public Employee Committee. And why didn't I want to take the Public Employee Committee? Because it was going to deal with pensions. I had this sense it was going to deal with pensions, because we've been talking about it for the last 10 years, the last six years, we had this task force going up. And I knew that it could never come to a very pleasant position, because yes, we all care about our firefighters, yes, we all love our firefighters and police officers and our constituents and everybody else. We have to keep the promises we've already made, but we have going forward, we have some things that we can do and must do currently to save money immediately, uh, and the only way to do that is with the actives, and to tweak that slightly so that it doesn't impact incredibly as, as many people down the road. Why did I choose to become Chair of the Public Employees Committee, knowing, as in the past, that this legislation would come to that committee? It actually didn't, it ended up going into Public Employees, but it's always, our public safety, it has always come to Public Employees. Why did I choose then to become the Chair? Well, Alderman Gargali left, and because finally I decided that the alternative of cutting budgets, fewer services, increasing taxes and fees, was even more objectionable to me than dealing with the pension problem. And we are now all sharing that. It is not a pleasant experience. But the alternatives, as the Alderman from the 27th outlined and some others have outlined, are even worse. We can sit here and we can wait for the state legislature to maybe offer a million or so of immediate relief, kick the can down the road with the entry age normal, worrying about getting the savings we need down the road when we hire new firefighters, and let our constituents continue to make up that difference and to get less in return. Or we can do what our constituents elect us to do, even though it might not be the most pleasant thing to do, which is to protect their interests as well as to protect the interests of the firefighters. You know, we talk about this boogeyman of going into court. We don't know what's going to happen in court. We have legislation that we pass all the time, and we should look at what the, what the options are and what may or may not happen. But the only way for us to know what is going to happen in court is if and when they take us to court. And they will be using, yes, they'll be using our taxpayers' money, because the firefighters' retirement system has no independent money of their own, it's all our taxpayers' money. Nothing we're doing here today precludes the firefighters and the state legislature from doing something that would bring about the real savings of about $5 million that we need. But quite honestly, we have been waiting for years and years for something to happen that would relieve our taxpayers of this burden. There has been legislation that would save a million here or there and delay costs. Promises have been made of more savings. Savings that we need to make up in other ways, $64 million in net present value, but those savings never materialize. The firefighters are unwilling, and I understand that, to un, impact any of their current active members, even on a prospective basis. Remember, we have to keep the promises we've already made that are here now, but going forward on a prospective basis, they do not want to impact any of their actives. If and when we pass Board Bill 270, we are giving ourselves options to get control of these unsustainable costs. It prevents nothing from going forward in Jefferson City. This legislation doesn't go into effect until we pass a pension plan, but it gives us a reason to continue to talk. Because you know what? If there's no, if there's no chance that the city's ever going to have this pension system, then there's no reason to talk to us. I talked about this earlier. It goes to Jefferson City, comes to us, it's already a fait accompli, and we either say yes or no. There's never any negotiation with us. It's important. I agree with everybody who said that we need to talk with one another, but we need to be in a position to be part of that conversation. I appreciate your support for perfection, and I renew my motion that we perfect Board Bill 270 Committee Substitute, and also renew my, uh, request for a roll call vote, Mr. President.
It's been moved and seconded that we perfect Board Bill Number 270 Committee Substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Troop, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Triplet, I didn't hear you, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldwitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmid, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed.
No.
Alderman Troop, Alderman Valmer. 19 I votes, 8 no votes.
By your vote, you stand the motion of Alderman from the 20th and 30th, and, excuse me, and perfected Board Bill Number 270 Committee Substitute.
That's the extent of Board Bills for our perfection.
Alderman from 20th, you recognize.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for suspension of the rules to bring down Board Bill 270 Committee Substitute for third reading.
Move by Alderman from 20th, seconded by Alderman from the 9th, any discussion? You want to dis, Alderman from 8th?
Uh, no, I mean, he's per.
Yeah, but I, I think, I don't think he's, he's already moved and seconded, and, all right, it's been moved and seconded that we, um, suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bill Number 270 Committee Substitute to the third reading calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Troop, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Triplet, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldwitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmid, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed. Alderman Troop, Alderman Valmer, Alderwoman Davis. 17 I votes, 10, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed it. 18 I votes, 9 no votes.
By your vote, you stand the motion of Alderman from 20th and move Board Bill Number 270 to the third reading calendar. Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
18 I votes, 9 no votes, to suspend rules on 270 Committee Substitute.
As I stated before, uh, you stand the motion of Alderman from 20th and suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bill Number 270 Committee Substitute to the third reading calendar. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change.
So noted.
Third reading.
Third reading consent.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill 290, 296, and 299. Board Bill 290, 296, and 299.
Alderman from the 13th, you recognize on third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for a third reading and final passage of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 13th, I entertain the second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 20th, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Troop, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, I didn't hear you. Alderwoman Triplett, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldwitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmid, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Troop, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Valmer, Alderman On, Arnoldwitz. 27 aye votes, no no votes.
By your vote, you stand the motion of Alderman from the 13th, third read and final passage of aforementioned bills.
That's the extent of, extent of third reading consent.
Third reading report of enrollments and final passes.
Board Bill 270 Committee Substitute sponsored by Alderman Schmid, Conway, Ortman, Howard, Florida, Behringer, Cone, and Cruzen, and orders pertaining to the Fireman's Retirement System, discontinuing the accrual of benefits under the Fireman's Retirement System and repealing in its entirety Chapter 4.18 of the Revised Code 1994 Edition.
Alderman from the 20th, you recognize on third reading, final passes of Board Bill Number 270 Committee Substitute.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for, uh, final, uh, third reading and final passage of Board Bill 270 Committee Substitute.
And moved by Alderman from the 20th, seconded by Alderman from the 15th, any discussion? Alderman?
Mr. President, members of the board, we, uh, just had a rather lengthy discussion about this. This legislation does, uh, keep us, um, in the discussion. It does not, uh, come into effect until such time as we have, uh, another alternative pension plan. Uh, there are efforts in Jefferson City. We don't know where those are going to go. This does not preclude those efforts, but it does, um, put us on record as being desirous of, um, uh, safekeeping our taxpayers' money while still protecting, uh, the interests of our firefighters. I would urge passage.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 24th? I'm having problems with your mic today, Ald.
Try, I'll try that again. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, since we know we're not done with this, we haven't changed any of the rules yet, uh, and we're gonna have to change some of the rules, whether it comes here or whether it comes from Jeff City in the next two months. Let's just keep in mind that we probably already have the ability to enact a local system for new hires. We don't have to hire another firefighter under the current system. Let's create a new system that we can afford, and let's put all the new people in that system. And then when we do that, let's look at changing the disability system as soon as we can. We know, we all, everybody acknowledges, that is the biggest problem we have with the current system, is the disability system. We need tighter rules, and we need the FRS trustees to enforce the rules that are already there on incomes. So, as we're going forward, let's keep that in mind. I believe that we could probably do both of those things in this chamber without any input from Jeff City at all. So we should look at doing that stuff, and we can potentially get savings with those changes relatively quickly. So I hope that's the route we go. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we, third reading, finally pass Board Bill Number 270 Committee Substitute. I'm assuming that you didn't have anything for close. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Troop, Alderwoman Flowers, Ald, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Triplett, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldwitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwa, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmid, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed.
No.
Alderman Troop, Alderman Valmer. 20 aye votes, 7 no votes.
By your vote, you stand the motion from Alderman from the 20th and third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 2, 270 Committee Substitute. Report of enrollment.
Board Bills 290, 296, 299, 280, and 270 Committee Substitute.
All other business being suspended, the President shall, on open session, affix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. Move for adoption of our cursee resolution, count, I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by the Alderman from the 25th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution 355, sponsored by Alderwoman Cruzen. The Board of Aldermen approved the assignment and use of cellular telephones, which are owned or leased by the city as provided by resolution.
Alderman from the 28th, you recognize on first reading of resolution Number 355.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Resolution 355 authorizes the cell phones, uh, that are used in various departments. It's our, our routine every year to authorize those phones. It was passed by E and A a couple of weeks ago, so I would move for unanimous consent of this resolution.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderwoman.
Uh, I renew my motion.
Uh, uh, no, you, you request unanimous consent, so we're good there. Just make the motion on the, on the.
Okay, now I move for a passage of res, adoption of resolution. Thank you.
Move by Alderman from the 25th, seconded by Alderman from the 20th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
That's the extent of first reading of resolution.
Second reading.
We have none.
Miss Lane, some unfinished business?
We have none.
Our announcements.
Tuesday full board meeting, 10 a.m. in the chambers. That's the first meeting of the 2012, 2013 session. That's the, um, no other meetings next week, other than Tu, Tuesday. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Any further, Alderman from the 22nd?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just have a couple of celebrity birthday announcements. Alderman Ken Ortman yesterday, and today is Alderman Shane Cone's birthday.
Alderman from the 15th?
And it was Alderman Ortman's birthday on Saturday. Happy birthday, Kenny, wherever you are.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? No further announcements? Alderman from the 13th, you recor, Alderman from 13th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to excuse the Alderman from the 1st and 10th wards due to necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from 13th, I'll entertain a second on the motion. Ald, seconded by Alderman from the 11th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alderman from 13th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn, signee die.
Moved by Alderman from 13th, I'll entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 11th, all in favor, signify by saying aye. We stand adjourn, we, excuse me, we adjourn, signee die.